Do you support the Carson tax proposed in Measure E P? Mr. Amador, Mr. Barry, Ms. Lundquist, Ms. Malloy, Mr. Dar, Mr. Dinsay, Mr. Sario, Mr. Bieber, Mr. Singh, and Mr. Abrams. That question was, do you support the Carson tax proposed in Measure E P? Take hold on to your hearts. Here comes, do you support permanent closure of the Aliso Canyon gas storage facility? And the next question, are you in favor of the city of Los Angeles establishing a public city bank in order to keep the public's money out of commercial banks? Mr. Yeager, Mr. Amador, Mr. Barry, Ms. Lundquist, Ms. Malloy, Mr. Dar, Mr. Dinsay, Mr. Sario, Mr. Bieber, Mr. Singh, or Mr. Abrams? All right, moving on to the next question, do you support repeal of Costa Hawkins in order to allow cities to set their own rent control ordinances? Mr. Yeager, Mr. Amador, oh sorry, this is, again, supporting repeal of Costa Hawkins in order to allow cities to set their own rent control ordinances?
That's what I'm saying, I don't rent control, it's a repeal, it's only confusing.
I know, do you support the repeal? Do you want Costa Hawkins repealed?
Which prevents rent.
Okay, all right, that's it, this is harsh. Do you support the repeal of Costa Hawkins? Costa Hawkins is in place now, do you support the repeal in order to allow cities to set their own rent control ordinances? Ms. Lundquist, Ms. Malloy, Mr. Dar, Mr. Dinsay, Mr. Sario, Mr. Bieber, Mr. Singh, or Mr. Abrams. Next question, are you in favor of bridge housing for the homeless in Council District 12? Mr. Yeager, do we have anybody who agrees with you? Mr. Bieber's maybe, well, the record show everybody else is now busy. Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Sario is a no. All right, let's move on to the next one. This is question number six. Do you approve of LA being a sanctuary city? Mr. Yeager, Mr. Amador, Mr. Barry, Ms. Lundquist, Ms. Malloy, Mr. Dar, and Mr. Dinsay, Mr. Sario, Mr. Bieber, Mr. Singh, and Mr. Abrams. Final questions, do you believe fire gas is a clean renewable energy source? Yes or no? Mr. Bieber, Mr. Amador, Mr. Barry, Ms. Lundquist, Ms. Malloy, Mr. Dar, Mr. Dinsay, we have a maybe, Mr. Sario, we have a Bieber, Mr. Bieber, we have a Mr. Singh, I have Mr. Abrams. The question was, do you believe that fire gas is a clean renewable energy source? That was the question. Do you want to hold your cards up again, anybody who has a second shot at it? All right, well, that's Mr. Malloy. Now, we're going to move on, these are our audience, these are your questions, these are thirty second questions, thirty second answers, excuse me. This is thirty minutes, but I think that's all it should be, ending this. So, let's go to the first one, this is an audience question, and this will be at random again. What is your position on rapid transit in projects in the valley? Rapid transit projects in the valley, what is your position? Josh McEager.
So, I would absolutely love to increase our public transportation here in the valley according to option one, the northern San Fernando Valley, faster of transit, they would make eventual, what we hope for, the small capacity of the Silmar, have C-SEN be a regional transit hub to get pedestrians back into classes instead of looking for parking. I also am advocating for light rail of the Orange Line, I believe we are spending money efficiently just by adding guardrails to it, I believe that if I made it light rail now ahead of the Olympics, we could be able to, be able to run the valley more rapidly.
Thank you. J. Bieber.
Most rapid transit is an important thing, but not at the expense of car lanes which are wired so traffic does not back up throughout the district, okay? So, or, when we put that in, it changes, automatically changes the zoning so they can build giant high rises all along the roadway and push out our single-family neighborhoods. So, it's appropriate where it should be placed, but it is not appropriate in a number of places where they are specifically talking about it right now, like down North.
Thank you. Mr. Sario.
I worked on a yes on six campaign. I have to drive from Granada Hills to Culver City every day for work. No mass transit will help me. Every transportation meeting I've been to about what's coming down the pipe for our district is not acceptable. They're talking about removing Van Nuys Boulevard and putting a light rail in, or taking away a lane in Nordoff and putting a bus lane in, that's not going to work. So, until they get serious, until they really start thinking about what's going on in our district and the policies that they're proposing, then we need more, more expansion of food.
All right, this is the next audience question for the next group. How will you balance compassion for unhoused individuals with concern for neighborhood safety? Stella.
This is a topic I'm very passionate about. I was lucky enough to be able to live in District 12 for forty years, lucky enough to be able to raise my kids in a safe community and enjoy a middle-class life. That said, homeless community are our neighbors and we need to address the crisis around them, and I would, as long as we can ensure social services, I would fight very hard to house them in bridge homes and transitional homes. Thank you.
And to Sean Dinsay.
Question number six.
How will you balance compassion for unhoused individuals with concern for neighborhood safety?
We need to get to the bottom line here. There are people that are mentally ill and drug addicted, running around making decisions based on mental illness, as you wrote and mentioned. It's compassion to help that person stabilize that person so they can help themselves. If we don't help this person stabilize their behavior, unfortunately, it causes the issues that we're seeing in our current community. At one time, we didn't see this, this is a different issue. This is AB 109, Pop 47, Pop 57 dumping this out on the streets, and now we're dealing with the mental health and drug addiction issue on our streets.
The question for Navraj Singh.
This is the only country in the world where at age seventeen, you tell your children to dance on their own. Who do you expect them to be? Where do they go? They are not even mature to handle themselves. Some of them become drug addicts, some of them become homeless, we cannot handle them. We have to spend time, we have to take care, this is a serious problem, it can be done, we need to show compassion, that's very important, and this problem can be solved if the will is there. Especially, all of us have to get together, chip in, and this problem can be solved. The homelessness can be eliminated completely.
Carlos.
Thank you for that question. I think that we can and should be compassionate and see the issue as a humanitarian crisis, and I think we also can take care of our communities and the public safety. I think if we're able to provide the services that our community members first were from the world experiencing homelessness, and if we're able to provide the necessary housing, if we're ensuring that no more people are facing the issue of homelessness, I think we're able to also address the issue of public safety, but I don't think it's necessarily to, thank you.
Thank you. This next question, what is your position on the right to counsel in eviction cases? This question for Lorraine Lundquist.
Thank you, I am in favor of the right to counsel for eviction cases. We have, because of the Ellis Act, which is state-level law, right now, we have lots of people who are being evicted from their homes in order to make room for new development. Developers are allowed to do this, this is something that we need to, that we need to try to stop in our city as much as possible, and we need to try to preserve existing affordable housing and existing units that people can afford to live in, and stop tearing them down and replacing them with luxury condos.
Question for Frank Barry, right, to counsel on all convictions.
You know, I guess I see it from the other end also, where the property owner and the homeowner, as a situation where rent's gone, six months uncollected, or the property owner is getting trashed, and so, the right to counsel means it speeds up the process to come to some conclusion. I'd be for it, but right now, I see many people when it comes to eviction, it takes up to a year for someone to be displaced who's not paid rent and is actually trashed a property. So, I have a little bit of a heart for the property owner as well as the renter.
Jeff.
This is a recent new funding issue, so the answer first is, I support the concept, I think we have to really think through how to finance it and how to administer it in a meaningful way. Access to justice is key, we need to make sure that people are not being necessarily evicted, and that requires the legal system, access to lawyers. At the same time, New York and City and San Francisco provide this, for example, but it's a real question of, we need to figure out a meaningful plan of how we would pay for such a thing, and make sure that it actually would be there for everyone in the program to tenant.
All right, this next round of questions here. In March, the San Francisco Board of Supervisors passed a resolution supporting federal Medicare for All legislation. Will you introduce a similar resolution in LA City Hall? Brandon.
No, I will not. I think the federal government fails every time they try and take over any type of industry. But what's going on in the DMV, they won't even allow an audit, and finally we get an audit, and the programs that they propose fail. To take, for government to take over healthcare, you are going to throw out millions and millions of people who have private insurance that are happy with their insurance, and I'm against it. I have, I have to work for my insurance, I have to make a certain amount of money through the Screen Actors Guild, I do it every single year, it's good insurance, I want to keep it.
That question for Lorraine Lundquist.
Well, I have been a big supporter of Medicare for All, I've been fighting for SB 562 at the state level and for Medicare for All at the federal level, and I continue to, I expect to continue to intend to fight for that. As a city council member, I prefer it when our council members focus on local issues, but I do want to fight for Medicare for All. Thank you.
All right, Sean Dinsay, same question.
We'll let San Francisco figure it out, and then if it fails there, then we don't do it.
All right, then, one more same thing, this is Medicare for All for Joshua.
I'm not going to pass this in the City Hall. You know, we can advocate at the state level, especially Medicare for People of Low Income and those who are disabled, but we don't even have a cost of something like that to our city, let alone our county. So, I think it's important to have all of the information first before you go and advocate for something. So, as in San Fernando now, I will actually, yeah, kidding for that one.
All right, a few times, once again, we are continuing our audience questions, these are thirty second answers. The next question is, District 12 is the only city district that has no affordable housing. The city pledged in 2018 to build 222 supportive housing units, what will you do about this? Frank Barry.
You know, I think the easy thing they could have been doing over time, which is what we did up in Santa Cruz, we started the affordable housing for citizens, and the government gave incentives to the developers to build and reduce some of their fees that they needed, but it was regulated how much they could charge the seniors. And so, when you're in a community where people are buying homes in the excess of a million dollars, right away when they hear affordable housing, fear, and the thing takes over like, not here, not in my neighborhood, but if it's senior citizens, and you could build, senior citizens could live there, it'd be a lot different attitude, I think, towards individuals.
All right, next, that same question for Stella. This is no affordable housing plus 222 supportive housing units.
I am for 222 units of affordable housing, I am for many units of affordable housing for District 12.
The way this is written, and I just want to clarify, because these are kind of, it's a fixed metaphor, 222 supportive housing units, that's definitely considered a problem?
Yes, so, but your question is two parts.
It talks about affordable, yeah, it's a two-part question.
So, I'm going to answer it that way, and I have thirty seconds?
Yeah, let's give her a little more time, because I'm trying to decipher this question.
Okay, so, affordable housing, absolutely. The way we're going to do this is, we have to do opzoning, we have to look at areas where we can do multifamily housing. I feel we need to look into these eyesore huge empty parking lots in some urban areas of our city and see how we can create supportive housing there. I think we need to work on entitlement laws, and we need to also bring incentives to developers who will build more affordable housing and less luxury housing. Thank you.
All right, this same question about affordable housing and supportive housing for Carlos.
Thank you. I am in support, and I will need the efforts to create supportive housing units and 222 million on supportive housing units pledge. I also want to be able to work with stakeholders and community members to be able to produce more affordable housing, to ensure that we're preserving the affordable housing and rent controlled units that exist, not only across the city, and also to make sure that we're protecting those that have currently affordable housing or rent-controlled units. I am in support of the right to counsel effort that has been pushed currently.
Thank you. And, there, thank you. Jay Bieber, same question.
I think part of the problem that we have with regards to the public's pushback against the affordable housing and the supportive housing is that they don't trust their elected officials anymore. Because the elected officials come out and they say, it'll be fine, there won't be any problems in your neighborhood, we'll take care of it, and people don't trust them. And they're concerned, and they're concerned about their neighborhood, and they're concerned about their quality of life, and they get, they see how the government's handled everything else, they don't trust it, and there's a wee bit of trust, and then they get called names like the Nibis because, because they have concerns about their lives and their kids,
that's time.
And so, that's why we have this problem.
Again, next audience question, what are your thoughts on removing HOAs from the commercial trash franchise? Navraj Singh.
What? I have to, I've noticed that this extensively, I need to do more studies, by the time I'm here next time, I'm going to give you an answer.
Thank you. Jeff Dar, same question, your thoughts on removing HOAs from the commercial trash franchise?
HOAs and also business, I have concerns right now with what we just done as to the fees that are arising and whether they're fair. I'm also concerned about outsourcing and privatization, which is sort of the direction of where this is going, so I'll read my answer.
That same question for Scott Abrams.
This program was terribly rolled out, and I was getting calls left and right from people who were experiencing great increases in less services, and I think we need to do better at the city at both. And so, this plan to give the franchise to particular waste dollars, we helped it in our council member, putting waste management in his own office to try to deal with a number of complaints. So, it was, it was a disastrous rollout, and as far as the HOAs go, I had to see how to manage that with the other stakeholders, but I do have great concern now.
Next audience question, this is, how will you continue to support the neighborhood councils? Jeff.
One of my passions, I've been talking about on the campaign, and it's on my website, is to get people who don't normally get involved, who are not the type who would get involved in neighborhood councils, to be involved and steer them in part of the solutions, and if we do that, we will have a whole new generation of people who will then be able to step up because they're now involved in their passion in Council District 12 and consider going into the neighborhood council system. And I think that's the way we bring new life, we bring new people, and we expand, not by competing, but getting more people involved so everyone's part of the solution.
Lorraine Lundquist, again, supporting neighborhood councils.
Thank you, well, I'm proud to be a member of a neighborhood council myself, I'm the second vice president over at Northridge Neighbourhood Council, I'm co-chair of the Homelessness Committee, and I'm a member of a number of alliances, like the Neighborhood Council Sustainability Alliance, for example. I really appreciate our neighborhood council system and I want to support it. One of the things that I liked about what council member Mitch Englander did was he had regular coffee with councils, where he sat down with neighborhood council members regularly every couple months, and invited them to talk about a specific issue we met in a specific part of the district, I'd like to continue that.
Thank you. Joshua Yeager, same question, neighborhood councils.
Well, I too am part of the chapter of neighborhood council, but my plan is to give more authority to the different councils. I'm not even going to pretend to say that I live everywhere or know everything, I think it's up to the community members within every neighborhood to decide, for greater sake or better say than what is developed within their community, you know, yeah, I would just leave it at that.
All right, same question again, Navraj Singh, how will you continue to support the neighborhood?
First of all, I'm guilty of not going to the neighborhood council as often as I should have gone. Every time I go in to Aldi and see that new shopping center coming up, I curse myself, why won't I stay with the neighborhood council? If I was there, I would have never, ever given my okay to approve that project. That is it, that is going to create traffic jams, whatever, I should have gone to neighborhood council and info, but I think that'd be a great job, but if I look at the neighborhood council that gave them the permission to do that, it'd be a good job.
It's your time, next, it's audience questions, they're for second answers. How will you, excuse me, what will you do to help bring disadvantaged women out of the cycle of poverty? Brandon Sario.
I was born and raised with a single mother. I got, I got to watch her work long hours and work hard every single day to make sure her two kids could go to college, and the biggest opportunity she had was because there was jobs, because there was an abundance of jobs. She had choices, she had choices to, once she got enough experience in one job, to make it to another job, and work her way up to eventually earning forty dollars an hour, even though she never went to college. And we have to make sure we keep policies to make sure there's more jobs and more opportunities for women than everyone else.
All right, Scott Abrams, same question, what would you do to help break disadvantaged women out of the cycle of poverty?
Well, this is all of these local issues that we're talking about, affordable housing, would certainly apply to women as much as men. I've been pushing at the federal level for, you know, for an ERA and for the rights of women to earn as much as men, because there still is discrimination happening in our country, and I'm endorsed by the constant author of that bill, Susan Malloy out of New York, because we absolutely need to make sure that women are getting paid as much as men, and then they'll be able to be out of this disadvantaged situation that you're talking about.
Stella. Same question.
I've been a champion for gender equity all my life. For the past two decades, I have actively fought for equity among women, especially women of color in underserved communities. Equality starts when we have wage equity, so that's where I would start my focus with. And if I'm in council, I'm going to promote and appoint women on committees and boards to address policies to that special lens. Thank you.
Frank Barry, same question.
I've been an educator for thirty years, I was principal of Bishop Albany High School. It begins in junior high and high school, and I would look all my young students in the eye and say, hey, look, you are going to college, I do not want you getting married or even think about it till you have a degree and we have a plan. And the goal was to go into all of our Hispanic families, talk to the dads, and say, hey, look, your daughter's so smart, at least let them go to C-Sun, they don't have to go away, let's get them to C-Sun, we'll get them an education, a bachelor's or a fifty paying job, and that's how you break poverty, is you get families to be educated with their kids, and the kids will grow up, and then their kids will be educated, and soon, there's no more poverty in the town.
The next question, I almost want to go off the cat's line of this, of this next group, what is the biggest issue facing Council District 12? Sean.
It's a broad question. And right now, I have to say it's public safety, it's public safety for purposes of persons hurting, hurting the community in and around shopping centers, business owners are having a huge issue with these issues, families are having huge issues with finding syringes, drug paraphernalia, people just want to be safe, the bottom line, if we can create a safe environment for these people to live in, and a voice or at least an ear for them to listen to them, then we'll hopefully change the direction of the world.
Same question, biggest issues facing Council District 12, Carlos.
Thank you. The many houses that I've been knocking on and the conversations I've been having with community owners is indisputable, it's the number one issue that people are pressed about, it's the homelessness crisis and housing crisis, so, I want to make sure that I'm leading the effort to ensure that everybody has a house, a roof over their heads, everyone has the necessary services to be able to get back on their feet, and that we're able to address the affordable housing crisis that the city and the district is facing.
All right, and finally, same question, Jay Bieber.
Well, we've already talked about two very important ones, and I don't want to ignore them, this is the environmental issues here in the district and homelessness, we've already talked about them. So, the other thing that I would like to talk about is the issue of the fact that it's the unaffordability that is caused by government policy. Every time we turn around, they want to tax us for, with their hands in our pockets, for businesses, they want to make it more difficult for the businesses, they don't support our businesses that supply jobs to the people here in this district, and all they do is vilify them instead of thanking them for being a business that's here in the district.
Now, I'm going to use the randomly generated list of names, to ask the same question of all of you. This is an audience question again, thirty second answer, what we need strength, would you bring to City Council? Carlos.
Thank you. Well, I'm a trained social worker, I want to bring the values of inclusivity, fairness, and compassion to everything I do at City Hall. I'm also an advocate, I've been organizing for many years now, and I bring about change at the local, at the state, and the federal level. I want to be able to bring those tools to City Councils to be able to fight for everyone in this District 12.
Next, Sean Dinsay, our answer.
Common sense and accountability, that is something that we're missing in our government, it's something we're missing in our politics, and it's something that we need desperately, once again, to change the course that we're going in.
To Navraj Singh, again, audience question, thirty second answer, you need strength, you break the same.
I think the most important thing the city is facing right now is that Ellis Uni, they have to pay them lots of money when they retire. I think, I've been in business, I have sat across people, and made sure that sometimes people can take less, but it has to be done in a very proper way, because teachers do a very important job for us, they educate our children, we have to be very, very respectful, but I think it can be done.
Thank you.
The thing is, continue to talk to them, and tell them that we need money somewhere else, I think they will listen.
Joshua Yeager, same question, you need strength.
As a community member of District 12 my entire life, I bring the community perspective, I bring a question voice, and I bring what I call bridging the gap between the older generations and the younger generations, and filling in the gaps of city government, which really did, as Sean says, common sense and accountability, I'm starting to really address the issue and bring, you know, innovative solutions that our city and district faces together.
Thank you. Lorraine.
Thank you. I have a different background from most people who go into politics. I have a PhD in physics, I'm a scientist, I'm a sustainability professor at Cal State University in Northridge, and I will combine the problem-solving, evidence-based perspective of science with the compassion I also have, as you can see from my background as well, being a foster parent, being a mom, and being someone who's been in the community as an activist, fighting for people in my community.
Thank you. Jay Bieber, same thing, you need strength.
I think that I proved that I'm able to get things done, because I'm able to bring people together who often don't, don't talk to each other. There was a bill up in Sacramento, AB 666, which would have taken away your right to a trial for certain traffic offenses, and I brought together groups that never talked to each other, ACLU, Howard Jarvis Backspares Association, Western Center on Law and Poverty, the Teamsters Union, a group all across the spectrum in order to defeat this bill, because it was a long thing to do, and I was able to do that because I was able to bring it together.
Frank Barry, you need strength.
You know, two things, one, experience. In Santa Cruz as a mayor, I mean, I, we went and did exactly what you guys need here with Eliso Canyon and with San Francisco Field Lab. We went out and fought at the federal, the state, the county levels, went to Birmingham, we fought Elsmere Canyon to stop the world's largest dump, we stopped C-Mex mining. I also have leadership. This community, right now, if you're going to find and get results when it comes to homeless, when it comes to Eliso Canyon, you need leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Barry. Scott. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Scott Abrams, you have thirty seconds.
For the last seventeen years, I've been a senior aide to our Congressman Brad Sherman. So I bring the perspective of bridging solutions from the federal, state and local perspective, which is what we need because of the issues we're talking about. Housing, we need VA and HUD involvement. On environmentalism, we need EPA involvement. Or I'm not public safety, it's the cops hiring program that gets more cops on the street here in L.A. So I bring the perspective and I can get the money, you know, our LA City Council goes to DC every year, hat in hand, hoping for more federal funds. I'm the candidate who can help get those funds.
Thank you. Brandon Soria, same question.
I'm born and raised here. This is my home, this is your home, this is all of our homes. I'm sick and tired of the corruption. I'm sick and tired of people not listening to us, the taxes. I've knocked over on over two thousand doors in this district. I've listened to all the stories. I don't care. I won't back down. And my number one priority will be for the public safety and to make sure that everyone in this district had the same opportunity to grow up in the district like I did. I was able to walk to school, I was able to go to Vons in the middle of the night and not worry about being mugged or any type of crime. And I want to bring the district back to that level. Thank you.
Thank you. Stella Malloy, same thing, you need strength, Mr. Councilman.
Close to the past two decades, I've been an executive at one of the most strategic organizations in the country. Probably the only one on this panel that has helped pass groundbreaking comprehensive campaigns creating good green jobs. I have actively held City Hall accountable. I have also been one of the leading fundraisers in California. And I know how to negotiate and bring center to left and left to center to create good agreements that benefit the community at large. Thank you.
You, Jeff Dar, I'll come this round.
We have a city council that's primarily the people who are staffers, politicians. I've been thirty-six plus years as a lawyer doing business. I've been a businessperson in the Valley for most of that time. In addition, I've been a city commissioner for the past fifteen and a half years. I've been able to sit here and, for example, at the L.A. World Airport's, LAX, which was frankly not a world-class airport, and in my couple of years there, turned it around so that it is now a way to becoming a major boat-class standard airport in a sustainable, job-powered way. And that's what I'm bringing to the city.
Thank you. All right, now, this is the final question, sort of. This is the ultimate candidate question round. These are thirty second answers, thirty seconds. This, as we discussed, is what didn't you get asked that you wanted to answer? So I hope you jotted that down. We have a random list. We will begin this ordering. This is first to Brandon Soria.
The number one, I didn't get asked this issue, but the number one issue in my district and in my neighborhood is public safety. I had my car stolen a number of years ago on Christmas evening. It was found in Box Canyon with duct tape, a knife and a sledgehammer. Shortly after that, there was a single mother across the street who's been living in my neighborhood for years, had her door kicked in the middle of the night, in the middle of the night, and she had to leave the district. And shortly after that, there was a Colombian drug ring that was busted right around the corner from my house. This is my one district, okay? And that's the number one issue. That's what we need to focus on. That's where we should put our priorities.
Thank you. Next question of your choice goes to Joshua Yeager.
I'd like to address the homelessness crisis. As I sit here today, I am the only candidate that, with input of two hundred and fifty community members, has a location for bridge housing that I've developed. It's on the corner of Noroff and Canoga. It's the MTA plus maintenance facility lot. A very underutilized decent property and I truly believe that Metro has to be a part of this. I've been working with Jana Riosio at Men and Kim Craft in the Valley. They have both agreed that if elected and we do start this construction, they will help in, you know, kind of funding the shelter. And it'll have rock-ground services to address both the drug addiction and the housing issue.
Thank you. Question, topic of your choice, Lorraine Laundes.
Thank you. I'd like to address the, what is your plan for a hundred percent clean renewable energy and my vision for that? So I have been a strong advocate on, on making sure that we address our climate emergency. Here in, in Los Angeles, we, this district was the epicenter of the largest climate disaster in U.S. history and we can shift to the new green economy of the future. And as we do so, it will create jobs. There are more fossil fuel jobs in clean energy, excuse me, there are more jobs in clean energy than there are in fossil fuels. And my vision includes saving money, which the new green economy will do. Thank you.
JB Gerst, question of your choice.
Well, this actually cuts across most of the questions, which is, how do we solve our problems that we have here? And part of the problem is we have professional politicians and their staffers and board members and people who are within government, and things the same way. We need people that are going to look at things differently and somebody who is not a politician. If you want something different, you have to vote for somebody different. You have to support somebody different. And that's what we have to do if you want things to change. You're happy with the way things are, there's plenty of people to vote for out here.
Frank Barry, again, question of your choice.
Last week, the Ninth Circuit Court Judge reconfirmed the decision that, here in Los Angeles, homeless can encamp and sleep on sidewalks, parkways, et cetera. And law enforcement, there's nothing they can do until we have twenty-one thousand more beds. If we keep doing what we're doing today, nothing's gonna change into the future. There's a point where you have to have leadership and you gotta have some guts and get the neighborhood councils together and have a coalition to site a facility for those who are mentally ill or have addiction.
Thank you, Tony. Jeff Dar, same question of your choice.
I'd like to address homelessness. First of all, time of the question is the biggest issue facing the city and in our district. We need to sit here and not move the problem around. We need to sit here and immediately develop and put in place safe, secure parking, safe beds. And we also need to enforce our laws. I wanna make sure I stress that also, we need to be smart and be the leaders in our own district and home on how we're gonna solve this problem. I will do everything in my power as a council member to end homelessness. Let me make that really clear. And we need to start right away and we need to change how long it takes to build housing in the city. Can't wait five years.
Sean Dancy, question of your choice.
I am really concerned about what bridge housing and support housing are gonna provide. We're putting two police officers inside, we're putting two police officers on the outside during this timeframe, possibly fifteen years. When I'm on the streets trying to get people in the shelters, they refuse them because they're unsafe. What's gonna happen to these locations unless we do, we need follow-through. We wanna make sure that we can make the right decision to set these locations up for success instead of failure, because the failure is gonna destroy us even more.
Thank you. Scott Abrams, question of your choice, topic of your choice.
Yes, on the Eliso Canyon topic, I absolutely support shutting down Eliso Canyon. But it's a bigger point about not viewing these tough issues in isolation. Again, federal, state, local, we have to have an approach that views it through all these lenses. For instance, on Eliso Canyon, at the national level, push for national storage safety standards that would apply to everywhere across the country. We've got EPA on-scene investigators here locally to deal with the crisis. At the state level, pushing Governor Brown to declare a state of emergency. It took too long to get that through. At the local level, we had a community resource center and I was there helping constituents get airbrushed.
Thank you, Tony. Carlos Adamo, same question of your choice.
Thank you. One of the things that I didn't get asked was in regards to the gender gap and the issues of economic justice for women. One of my fellow candidates said that as long as we tell women, just go to college, you'll be fine. I can't look at my daughter and tell her to go to college and you'll be able to succeed. We need to tackle the structural sexism that exists in our society, in our city. And one of the ways that I want to be able to lead on that is to support and pass the Civil Human Rights Ordinance to enforce anti-discrimination laws in ways, thank you.
Now Raj Singh, question of your choice.
At the end of the day, one important thing we all need is dignity. And right now, we are not worried about the dignity of the people who are homeless. I think this problem has to be solved with private funds, not with city funds. On the very first day, I'm sworn in as the next councilman. I will make sure I start collecting funds from private donors to build this homeless center in a place where nobody will object. If you want to hear more about it, I'm doing a meet and greet the day after tomorrow at two o'clock in a Chinese restaurant. All of you are invited and we'll go in detail.
All right, there's so much to read out of this, so we'll tell people more about that. Stella Malloy, question of your choice.
There's so many.
Clearly, homelessness, affordable housing, public safety, shutting down Eliso Canyon, these are the most important issues I'm gonna tackle within our district. But I wanna highlight the importance of transparency in City Hall and putting an end to secret settlements, putting an end to sexual harassment in City Hall. In this day of Me Too movement, we cannot tolerate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we come to our closing. This is sixty seconds for closing statements. Again, we have a randomly generated list, I'll give you a moment to kind of collect your thoughts. But we're going to have closing statements now and we will start with Scott Abrams.
Yes, thank you. I keep roots in this community. My parents were sitting over there, they're at CSUN as undergrads fifty years ago. I was born and raised here in the West San Fernando Valley. In the last seventeen years, I've worked for L.A.'s Congressman, Congressman Brad Sherman, to provide outstanding constituent services. I run a constituent service office, which means that when someone has a problem with pregnancy, they come to me and I, for the last many years, I've been working to help make sure that valid residents get the justice they need from government. And that's what we need. I used to teach high school civics. No one's gonna have faith in our system unless we're providing outstanding constituent services. I can do that, plus help with federal, state and local responses to these tough issues because I work for a United States Congressman. Thank you.
All right, these are closing statements. Again, you have sixty seconds. The timekeepers aren't gonna be time for you, so just know that you've got the full sixty seconds. You wanna use it. Next, closing, Sean Dancy.
I've been a police officer for twenty years. I've seen the ins and outs of these communities, I've seen them change. Something, and I grew up in this neighborhood, I didn't see the stuff that I'm seeing today. My children are seeing things that I never thought, nine years that they would oversee, but they have seen it today. But there's one thing that I am focused on, and that's gonna be our children. Because every decision going forward is gonna be benefit of our children. I'm in a position today to make those decisions for them because we've let them down so many times. And we continue to let them down, especially after the Porter Ranch blowout, right? We let those kids sit in that school for two days without, you know, let them have the nosebleeds and have the medical conditions that they're gonna have from this. We let them down. So we need to do everything in our power to protect our children, make every decision going forward in the benefit of our children. And if it's a decision or that is the wrong decision and it's gonna hurt our children, then we don't make it.
Thank you. Jeff Dar, closing statement, one minute.
I've lived in the district last thirty-two years. I grew up in bad eyes, I'm a valid person, this is my community. The last fifteen and a half years, I've been a city commissioner. And the last three and a half years is what motivates me to run, to be your council member. I've been one of the seven people overseeing and controlling the L.A. World Airports, where the budget is drastically more than virtually every city in the United States. It is tremendous. And I've been able to, with others, turn around what was not one of the great airports and turn it into what will be one of the best airports in the world and a beacon for the city of both sustainability and empowering people. We're taking the people mover training, Tech Rail, for example. But out of that, I was able to build in five hundred eighty million dollars that's earmarked for local small businesses and disabled vet businesses. If we could take the spirit of what we're doing at the airport now and train things around in such an innovative, sustainable way and apply them to our basic city services, we would drastically change everything in our life and that's what I wanna do for everyone. And that's what I've been doing. Thank you.
Closing statement, one minute, now Raj Singh.
What do we do when you lose a child in the fourth night and he dies in a car accident? What do you do if it has to lead a venture company in the board? What do you do when you ask to control the rights in a city that has a rights problem? What do you do when you are asked to serve? I have done all. I have not done it in the public sector. I'm not here for a job. I'm not looking from the job from the city councilman to the next level to the next level, which a lot of people here are doing that. No. But if you want a leader who can act under pressure, this is the guy sitting in front of you. I will solve the homeless problem with private funds. It can be done, it is possible. I will feed the homeless by having a seed temple next to every homeless center. It can be done. We will give delivery to people who need it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next closing statement, one minute, Stella Malloy.
I am an Armenian-American immigrant from Iran. I have lived in this district for forty years. I know it inside and out. I have fought for low-wage industry sector workers for the past twenty years, winning them comprehensive campaigns, creating a middle class. I know how to hold City Hall accountable. I know how to bring connected people who can benefit our district together. And I would love to be part of ending the political dynasty that has existed in this district between the city councilmen and their chief of staff taking these seats year after year. We haven't had a female councilman since nineteen fifty's in this district. Time has come to change. Thank you.
Closing statement, Joshua Yeager, one minute.
Thank you again, everyone, for coming today. I will be the first to tell you, I am not the most conventional candidate. I'm the young man from the community who's lived in the 12th his entire life, attended local centers, like Manago and Sheffield College Academy in Englewood, graduated from Chaminade in West Hills. This is my home and I have watched over the last twenty-six years as we kind of turn back the clock. I am offering innovative solutions and what I'm offering is a trade partnership in government. That's why I've committed myself to helping on tens of thousands of doors between now and election day, trying to get as much input from the community as possible to help round out the platform. But, you know, my family owns a Jerusalem exit in North Hills and I said for a long time, I used to bring people to the dinner table and now I'm going to bring people with me to City Hall. And that is my commitment to everyone in this group today, that together we can govern and make our district a true model for the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Lorraine Laundes, one minute, closing statement.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Being a city council member is really about solving problems. It's about solving the problems of everyday people and solving the big, big problems of our city. I am a scientist. I have a lot of experience with evidence-based problem-solving and I've had the opportunity to put that to use in a lot of different situations. For example, launching a research satellite, being the liaison between the Japanese and European and American scientists on a research project that was bringing together a lot of different cultures and had a lot of different misunderstandings. I had the opportunity to design and build and fundraise a solar powered car and race it across the country. I've had the opportunity to be a foster parent to three beautiful children, which has its own ways of requiring a lot of interesting problem solving and dealing with individuals. I've been a neighborhood council member and had the opportunity to work on the problems in my local neighborhood and help solve the problems of the people who live in my district.
Thank you. Carlos Adamo, one minute, closing statement.
Thank you so much, everyone, for giving me an opportunity to share my vision for the district and the city. As a young immigrant, I faced many barriers to get to where I am today. Whether it was working as a janitor, the night shift to pay for my education or support my family, today living with deportation on my brother, with experiences like those that made me the fighter I am today. As I mentioned, I live with my wife and my five-year-old daughter in Granada Hills. I didn't have the privilege of growing up in the district, but my wife and I made this our community to make sure that that opportunity is provided to our daughter. I want to make sure that everyone has a voice in City Council. I wanna be able to tackle the issues of corruption hidden as well as leading on climate action by shutting down Eliso Canyon. I wanna make sure that everyone has a roof over their table and the economy is working for everyone. Whether it's working, backbreaking jobs or leading campaigns at the local, state and federal level, I wanna bring those diverse experiences to City Council to use my tools to build a City Council and a City Hall that everyone can believe in. Thank you.
JB Gerst, one minute, closing statement.
Well, first I wanna thank all of you, because this is what public participation looks like. And this is how we get changed and this is how we get things done. I have a proven track record of results. I saved the city, people of the city, over two hundred million dollars by getting rid of the red light camera program. And I've done parking reform, I've changed things at the state and local level. But the public here needs a voice. You need a voice in City Hall, somebody who's not a politician, somebody who's gonna have your back when there are problems in the district and to support whether it's the neighborhood council or the neighborhoods themselves. We don't have that support with the city council level right now. Also, I just wanna say that I am running not to tell you how to live your life, okay? I'm here to make sure the city provides the services that it's supposed to provide. So when I go to City Hall, we are going to City Hall. It's not just about me. My name is JB Gerst. I hope I have earned your support. Please vote on June fourth. Thank you very much.
We have a couple more closing statements. I have a quick reminder for the audience before we're done, so kind of stick with us right now. Frank Barry, closing statement, one minute.
You know, I've been in CD twelve for thirty years. I grew up, went to an Allee Street Elementary, Frost Junior High, went to Alumini High School. Then I went off to Cal State Northridge, a whole few blocks. then I went off to Cal State Northridge, a whole few blocks away from our house, got my bachelor's degree while I was a sporting goods guy at JEMCO. So some of the older people are going, oh, JEMCO, yeah. My first real job is, I was a teacher, and I was Teacher of the Year at Nobel Middle School, I was recognized by the 31st District PTSA. While I was at Nobel, I went to law school, passed the bar in 1992. Couldn't afford a home here, so I went to Santa Clarita, and I was proud to serve 16 years on the council. We brought 9,000 acres of open space into public domain. I started the Blue River Test, forced alcohol and drugs, we developed a senior citizen place, and keep going, I was principal of Bishop Alomani High School, and I have an awesome wife, Maury, and sons Nick, Keon, Jake, and Kevon, and that's the longest I could be here today if it wasn't for them.
Thank you, that's a good time. Again, stick around, I've got a couple announcements I really have to make now, but the final closing statement, one minute, Brandon Sarrio.
Hello, everyone, my name's Brandon Sarrio, once again. Frank Ferry actually was one of my teachers at Nobel Middle School. He's a good dude, okay? I was born and raised here. My grandfather came here in 1961 after the Korean War. He started painting business. When I was 14 or 15, I started working with my grandfather, painting in the San Fernando Valley. When I say my blood, sweat, and tears, and my grandfather's and my uncle's blood, sweat, and tears are in this district, they are. Recently, I was walking my golden retriever in a neighborhood that I grew up in, and she almost walked on a crack pipe. I'm not, you know, I'm afraid to let my girlfriend go to Vons in the middle of the night anymore because of the things I've seen when I've gone. These solutions will not be solved by the next chief of staff, or the next this, or the next that. I went to Brad Sherman's town hall.